You want to join us, it's a nice thing. Everybody actually is from Africa, okay? Free welcome. And I'm also an adjunct professor at F GCU and I joined this and you couldn't be very special. So we take a lot of time to prepare for this. The format the candidates know, it was said to them beforehand. We have divided the questions into they'll introduce themselves, then they'll talk about leadership. Then, yeah, we have questions that is general follow of them about their experience and then there'll be questions on personal instruction. And then there'll be, I hate to say, but a secret question.
Singer.
Want to say it's not me. These questions have been flooding my emails every time, so many of them. And I'm not sure if they're to respect the wishes of the people. After all, that's what the debates are about, right? So we asked those and then we have the closing remarks later on, alright? The candidates don't know the questions, but they pick envelopes and there'll be questions, asking questions. These are leadership questions and personal questions and they'll be asked and just be opening, who picked whatever. They also selected A, B, C, D, E, but you'll be conducting the debate, A, B, C, D, and then change the start and the ending like that so that we give everybody a chance. So without any further ado, I'd like to...
I just wanted to ask, can you look at the video speaker that is speaking? Make sure your face front and stand up so the people can see.
Very good.
If I'm in the back and I'm not hearing you.
Oh, very good. I am reminded, thank you so much. That would have really acted, you know, a good kid. I should have said, as you might know, like many other people in this community, accents are coming in, alright? And if you fight or try to be as slow as possible, but if you don't get across your candidates, please, please, please. This company are not be offended. And I'll try, as the lady said, to be as clear as possible and face the community. That's what she just told me, so that you can hear the questions and the candidates' responses, okay? Thank you so much for that. So everything is two minutes. Alright, without any further ado, and the game begin, right? Alright, candidate 2, candidate A, I've been dividing them as candidate A, B, C, D, except for the secret questions, alright? Over to you. Start the timer.
Hi, my name is Dido Manaya and it is such a pleasure to be here with you. Before I get started, how many teachers, existing or former teachers, do we have in the room? Great, thank you. The school year just finished up, so that's pretty exciting. For teachers, for all of us, I think one of our primary responsibilities is to also inspire learning, right? Inspire our kids, inspire teachers, especially as school board members or leaders of education. Inspirational leadership is most important. And I also think that raising the bar for our school board, the performance, the accountability is also highly important for this next school board. My story, you know, I came to this country when I was four years old. I didn't know English and I was fortunate that my mom was an elementary school teacher and my dad was a high school teacher. And my mom didn't know much English, but she, you know, she shared with me, you know, stick with it when I had some problems and she said, you're off for morning language, right? And for those that are teachers, I'm sure you've had ESL students and some students that really don't know English that well. I was that school, right? I stuck with it, I did well in school, got a partial scholarship for college. Later on, one of my companies, AT&amp;T, Lucian, paid for my MBA Vanderbilt University. Later on, a global consulting firm, Accenture, paid for my doctorate in education. My doctorate in education is from the University of Pennsylvania, an Ivy League institution. And the Grammy School of Education is ranked in the top five in the world. That's when I first learned what it's like to be a student in a world-class school system, right? World-class university. I moved on to lead learning organizations, world-class learning organizations, both in Latin America, the Caribbean, in Asia, and then globally. And I'm going to share a lot more in terms of the questions as to why and how. But really, the why of it is, I love education. I want to make sure that our students get the best education possible. I'm not seeing that happening for a number of segments of our students. And I am absolutely here to step up, make a difference, and change our world.
Good afternoon, I'm Betsy Vaughn and I'm your best choice for District 7. And I'm the only career teacher in this race. I bring to the board experience in 38 years in the front line, in classrooms, including 19 years as a department chair in Texas and eight years right here in Lee County at Estara High School. When I retired two years ago, I felt the need to continue to deepen my involvement with educational advocacy. And this is because I care about this community, Lee County. A strong system of public education not only supplies our children with the tools that they need for future success, but it also strengthens the quality of life in our community and the economic development of our community. On a more personal note, I have two grandchildren who are enrolled in Lee County schools. And I want to be sure that they continue to receive the best possible education. And I want them to have the ability to choose from among the various special programs and offerings that we have right now without those programs perhaps being cut because of budget shortages. This afternoon, I'm not going to insult you with platitudes and with empty rhetoric. I have some very specific priorities and they include ensuring financial responsibility and doing that by cutting costs, but also we're in a deep hole of debt and so we also need a new sustainable source of revenue. I want to retain highly qualified teachers. The veteran teachers need to have gotten raises. Veteran teachers, they need to have respect, they need to have input into their own personal, own professional development and input into site-based decision-making. One thing that would save us some money with the cost-cutting is that I favor a modified, a modified choice program for K through 5. More on that later, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Derek Daniel. My title is Dr. Daniel. I have other names you might have heard, triple D or big D, that's the D. I'm here today for one purpose. Primary purpose is to garner your support for District 7. Great, great panel of people pursuing this position. But I want you all to really be critical in your thinking as you hear the responses to the questions. A little bit about me, I've been here for 20 years. I'm just part of the fabric, you might have passed refereeing over here, basketball. I've been a basketball referee in the community. I belong to a great church, I'm a student in gymnasiums and I'm a PJ. Currently, I work with the school system as a teacher, a sports class, science coach. I'm an adjunct professor at FSW. I also have been a twice-elected city council member for the city of Cape Coral. Due to term limits, I can only run. You see, I'm striving because my wife said, make sure I get all these points. I have a master's and bachelor's from Jackson State. I received my doctorate degree in education from the University of Southern Florida. And I think I get all of that. Oh, the last thing I suppose to get from my veterans out there, I have a mission officer, the United States Marine Corps, served during the Gulf War. Now, that aside, that to me is just a bunch of talk. Why am I in the race? There are three pieces that make up why I'm in this race. Number one, the retention of teachers. In the school district, if you weren't aware, in September of this year, there were almost 70 vacancies while school was going through. And for those of us that have been there, if you ever had a classroom where there was not a teacher who was permanent, that caused issues. That's number one. Point number two, we do need to do something about transportation because we continue to hear all the information about transportation costs, transportation costs. I think that there are some avenues to be, make some hybrid models under the student assignment where we take the three subzones and maybe even subzone those subzones and give us an opportunity to save some money on transportation costs. And third, and certainly not least, we have to have a sustainable revenue service, alright? One of the things that you all know and it's no secret that the school board does not directly impact that. In other words, they don't vote. We are literally at the beck and call of the county commissioners and our state representatives. Now, I have already established some of those relationships having been a key post and council member and I certainly want to draw on that as we continue to work together to sustain it. So, thank you again, I'm Derek Daniel. I look forward to meeting you at the end. I really want to have that conversation, so go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, excuse me. Michael Brooks is the assistant speaker.
We can hear well. Can you set up whatever?
Oh, okay. Good afternoon, my name is Kathleen Morgan. Thank you all for being here and thanks to the New Majority Alliance. These forums to educate citizens are really important. I'm not an educator, I worked on Wall Street and I got my MBA. I became passionate about public education when I was elected to a local school board in New York State and served two terms. After that, I got my master's in education administration and I was elected to Lee County School Board in 2012. As your elected school board representative since 2012, I have demonstrated my commitment to improving educational outcomes for all Lee County students. Demonstrated my commitment to fiscally responsible strategic investment of taxpayer dollars in education programs and business operations. And in response to the 2014 National Accreditation Report that cited the board for lack of congeniality, trust, and respect, lack of protocols and practices, and data-rich analysis for working environment. As board chair 2014-15, I worked to create an environment of trust and professional working climate by scheduling workshops and almost 40 hours of professional development and work. My 2016-20 goals are still very much the same. Meaningful change that ensures a quality governance team leading strategically. Professional conduct, best management practices, use of data to measure and assess our strategic plan. Great level of student competency in English and language arts. A teaching and learning culture that embraces creativity and initiative. And responsible long-term planning in a new revenue model environment. Thank you very much.
Does this work?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for organizing this wonderful event. It's so great to get out and talk to people. I also want to thank my wonderful husband Chuck, who can't be here because he's out here in Lehigh protecting us all as a deputy. My background is from Silicon Valley. I'm an entrepreneur. I've been an entrepreneur since I was a little kid, but in Silicon Valley, I was allowed to shine, thanks to a good education. I grew up poor, but ended up the other way. And I think that's an opportunity that needs to be given to all our kids. If they want to grab the brass ring, they ought to have the tools to do it and that's our job in the schools to do that. I'm here today because we just received a report a couple of weeks ago and our kids and our community are in trouble. This report right here from the state shows that 53% of our kids are on grade level. Only 53% in math and 54% in English. Nearly half our children are failing. You've heard about all these great programs and some of these people have been active in the education arena for a long time. We need to apply common sense, not common core, is my point. And if you look at this chart, four years ago, our scores were 76%. Four years ago. We've dropped 23 points in four years. And we can see examples of this in every school. Our administrators don't want to talk about it. But we have to because it's so terribly important to our kids. There are two things we need to do. We need to worry about what are our children learning and how much time are we giving them to learn? We need to stop the incessant testing and get back to learning the ABCs the way we used to because that is what works. For the last 2,000 years, we've known what works. Trying all these new shiny toys that are offered by our lobbyists in Tallahassee and in Washington DC has not worked. It's enriched them and impoverished us. We need to do better, thank you.
That is the end of session one and it's good to hear all the candidates' goals and a bit of progress. Thank you. Now we get to leadership and issues. Issues, natural issues and local issues pertaining to our job. And the first question goes to candidate B. Second question, it's on transgender issue and it reads, "The new North Carolina law called HB2, the public facilities, privacy, and security are put in place as statewide policy that bans individuals from using public bathrooms that do not correspond to their biological sex. It mandates that transgender students use bathrooms and locker rooms that correspond with the gender of their birth certificate." Many other people argue that this is discrimination and a violation of Title IX and the students' rights. They argue that transgender students should be allowed to use bathrooms that correspond with their gender identity. When this issue comes up in county, most likely one of you will be members of the board. How will you react to this?
Alright, well, the first thing with that is, I don't want to discuss this issue as an issue of states' rights. I want to discuss this as an issue of human rights. I think that there are many people, many people that I've spoken to, or actually many people who didn't want to speak about it, that do not have a clear idea of what a transgender person really is. And I'm not here to give you an anatomy lesson on that. But I do want to underscore that we as stakeholders, we as governments for the Lee County schools, we need to assure safe schools. And that means a safe school for any individual. And not to point out differences with people, but to allow these people, allow the students who are transgender or truly transgender to use the bathroom that corresponds to their identified gender. As a matter of fact, it's not a difficult task. For instance, before this forum started, I went outside the door and I used the transgender bathroom, which was the family bathroom. Lee County Schools deals with this. The counselors deal with this. The students, I think a lot of people have fear that there's going to be sexual predators. That couldn't be further from the truth. And so the bottom line on this is, I support the rights of these students. I support on all levels, any kind of anti-bullying and that includes every color, gender, personal belief. Thanks.
I need to clarify that each candidate will get a separate question, but here they have a chance to react to any other of these questions. If we go to the next question, I want to give you five seconds, then before you five minutes. Is the man on the left, candidate number 10? Thank you. Candidate C. This is about teamwork and functionality. Our current school board has been accused of not functioning properly because people are not functioning together as a team. If the board is going to be effective, it must function as a team and we need a candidate who will become the board member as a team player. They also stay in their lane and let the superintendent and other administrators do their job. What you want to do when you become a member of the board, increase that effectiveness of our board by teamwork and keeping each other in at the same time.
Doc, just the middle of that, when you said about the administrators, I didn't quite understand. The one sentence about before administrators.
That you left, you left the admin, yeah, that you left the administrators do their job.
They also stay in their lane and let the superintendent and other administrators do the job.
That's right. Thank you.
Teamwork. For me, you all have had an opportunity, because they're still out there on the web, to see exactly how I conduct myself when I'm a part of the board. And it's vital that we be able to agree to disagree. Now, that's not a cliche. What that simply means is as we have these issues come up, like the transgender one, which will come, alright? We will have to deal with it. We always respect one another, even if we disagree with what they're saying. And at the end of the day, we have to understand that we, and I fully understand, that I am an ambassador for the school district. I have to be out there and when people see me, something about them will say, hey, I want to come to Lee County. What's going on in Lee County? Because I'm just that kind of advocate. So my background, my track record is all about teamwork. And you've already seen because I've had to go through with three city managers, be on the process of hiring and then supervising them, that I am not a micro-manager. There's this position called strategic planning, which is very important during the strategic planning session. Then we sit down, the board, we say, this is what we want to happen. We set the expectation, we set the outcome, and then we monitor it. So these pieces are all sold in place. My record speaks for itself. I look forward to working on more than that capacity and we definitely will solve that and have that positive connection. Thank you.
Candidate D. Some high schools, and this is a very question particularly in this region, have not been doing very well. By the way, some primary schools doing very well, yeah, elementary schools are very good, like veterans. But some high schools, not so good. The question here is, would you propose the rotation of school principals to collect this imbalance because of schools in other areas are doing very well? Or how else can you help in trying to improve the performance of the high schools here?
Well, actually, that's not the responsibility of the board. That's the responsibility of the superintendent to improve the quality of schools out here. And I have to say that I think Dr. Atkins is doing a terrific job. He is taking high-performing principals and transferring them to low-performing schools because everybody knows that the person who has the greatest impact is the teacher. That the person who has the greatest impact on the teacher is the leader. And successful schools have principals who are able to gather qualified staff. And as a team, they develop a culture that works for a particular population of students. The students in Lehigh are not necessarily the same students as in Anita or on the Cape. They have their own unique set of needs and their own motivations and lifelong goals. So getting leadership with staff and a culture that supports those students is critical and that's the job of the superintendent. What the board can do is change policy or authorize the superintendent to provide economic incentives for people to move to areas that are difficult to get to. Lee is tough to staff because it's not very close to where most of the staff live, which is Cape Coral. And so we need to provide financial incentives as well as additional resources from the central office to support what the work that's being done in the high schools here.
Candidate E. Given that the Lee County student population of 93,000 or so has 57% minority students, how important is it to you that the board and administrators and the teachers have need similar diversity in the school, in the administration? Would you be in favor of affirmative action to balance that the density of school administrators or not? And yeah, but this position was also for diversity, that's how I feel, thank you.
I believe that justice is what we need in our schools at all levels. Hiring, teaching, training, all of those things. And I think justice does not come with a color or a size. If you didn't know, small people are prejudiced, people are prejudiced against small people too. And people are prejudiced against women or men. Why are we picking out one based on color when there are lots of different prejudices? We have to find the best teachers who care the most about our children, who are the most effective at teaching them, and then give them the tools and the authority to do so. That's where we're lacking today. Our teachers have no authority and they don't have the tools they needed, they need, to make sure that our children are learning properly. We have to get off these side tracks and get on to what our children need and that is the ability to learn each and every day. Thank you.
And last track candidate, C. This is about safety, and it has come about all along. But, this question came up from many people and it reads, "There was a very tragic incident in one of our high school's history involving a 15-year-old girl and several boys after school hour." Not mentioning the children. There are many issues surrounding that incident. Misdivision after school.
Do you want to hand him the microphone?
Obviously, thank you.
Right, can you hear me loud, nice? Thank you, I'm sorry, okay. "There was a very tragic incident in one of the high school's history involving a 15-year-old girl and several boys after school hour. There are many issues surrounding that incident. Misdivision after school, respect, ethics and morality, safety, equal treatment, and everything else that goes around it. The board must be proactive and forth-thinking in putting in place plans to ensure that schools are safe and vulnerable for all our children. We cannot just wait to have this kind of tragedy in our midst. When you're a board member, what can you do to help in this proactive business?"
Yeah, this was a tragic issue and I think, you know, what we're seeing as, as so many things, whether it's technology, social media, as we progress, it's just going to get more challenging for us. We're going to face issues on this board that we never even dreamed of, like this specific issue, right? And we have to be able to take inputs from our superintendent, from our principals, from our teachers, but also inputs, of course, from the parents and the students. There's other community organizations that we absolutely have to partner with. I see this definitely as a school district issue, but it is an absolute community issue. We all know the, how trafficking takes place between Miami and Tampa and we're in the middle of that. As a community, we need to become much more aware of the situation and become ready to start analyzing positions and the school board is just one of those positions, right? Safety, I've been looking at safety for quite a while and we have one, one school board candidate in another race and I asked him flat out, are our schools safe? And he said, well, in some schools, there are six entrances and only three are cared for. In other schools, we're pretty well cared for, right? So, in my research, I found something called Campus Shield and I'm going to recommend this to the superintendent to take a look at. It's sort of like your clicker to your garage door, but as soon as you click it as a teacher, if anything's happening, all the video cameras come onto that, that particular situation. The, not only does the school police get informed, but text messages go out to different people. Campuses and districts across the country are using Campus Shield and making their schools much safer. Is it a little bit of investment? Yes, but the safety, those issues, I think outweigh that. That was helpful.
Right, those were the five issues on leadership and national issues and the last one is very tragic. You must have established that and so many issues. And I hope that board members will take care of that. We don't, every parent would never, no parent would ever want to have that kind of situation. It's too tragic, even one student. So, my friends, you're going to react to any other issue, even the one you addressed, if you want to. You've got two minutes, you have to react to any one of those five issues. And we start again in the same order, we start with B, C, D, E, A.
Okay, decisions, decisions. I think I want to talk about the question of minority population at 57%, not reflecting the makeup of our staff and our administrators. While I do agree with Chris that we look, we want to look for the very best for our administrators and our teachers and our staff, I really feel that we need to do a better job in Lee County in recruiting minorities. You know, here, here I stand, an older white woman who lives in a gated community, but I...
But I can tell you that I have, I'd say, a fairly good understanding of what some of these students go through. One of the reasons for that is I've already been in Lydham for the last year, and I have actually gone into the homes. My two young ladies that I am advocating for, both Hispanics, both young mothers. And so I've gotten glimpses. Now, do I know in my skin what it's like? No, but I do know that I have an understanding. And I know there's some problems in Lee County. For instance, there've been a lot of studies that show that black students respond in different ways and in more positive ways educationally to teachers that look like them, okay? Another thing that I want to point out is, we are not doing a good job in this county with our English language learners. One of my priorities is to raise the graduation rate overall. But I especially look to the ELL students who graduate at a dismal rate of forty-seven and a half percent. We need to do something on that.
Yeah, I want to, we're at the Lehigh Forum, so I want to get into the issue about the performance of the zones. Remember earlier, I talked to you about the three subzones. You have the west zone, you have the east zone, the south zone. We're in the east. Now, I always say, look past the headline. The reports that came out are the things that a person like me who works at James Stevens International, the U.S. School. So it's easy to look at proficiency, and you see that. But there's a story behind that. When you look at the zones, the question I want to ask you is, are you aware, when you look at, let's talk about the west zone, my Cape, you know I love the Cape, a resident there, and look here, Lehigh. If you take a standard elementary school, right, you pick, and you want to look at one thing, what is their reading level when that child starts? Let's look at a third grader. So if a third grader starts here at James Stevens, reading on the first grade level, and you compare that in the west zone, when I was a collusive middle as a principal, when I talked with the elementary principal, they start at the third grade reading level. That's not an apples-to-apples comparison when you get to the end. The apples-to-apples comparison is to look at where they started and look at where they ended. Now, if I said to you, well, yes, the proficiency level, the report states that there was this many not passing, but you see that there was a year-plus growth? Now it gets hairy because people are like, what do you mean? See, a teacher's expected to move that kid at least one year. What the report won't show you is that many of the teachers are moving them a year and a half worth of growth, but they're still missing proficiency. Are you all following me? I don't want to just be talking in the clouds. This is not an excuse. We have got to set policy to get help and support for our ESOL children and Haitian children and all those hundred-and-twenty-seven languages that are not proficient. We can set that policy. Everything is not going to look the same because the collusive middle doesn't have the same needs that Lehigh middle does. And we have the power to do that at the school board. So I understand how to look beyond the headline, look critically at those issues, make policy to get that support in the schools. And as long as we're together, I hear your commitment, we'll work with the superintendent. We can get that done. We can, and we will get that done. Thank you.
I'd like to talk about teamwork and functionality. Since 2010, or in 2010, the corporate, the culture, leadership culture in the district dropped away. And governance at the top became a matter of personal and political agendas. There was no teamwork, collusion, or disrespect. As long as you had a board majority of three, you could function as a board. And that has had tragic consequences for the district. Because I've been on the board three years, not four years, and I've worked with three superintendents. What happens is that every time the superintendent changes, what happens on the ground changes for teachers and for principals. So they have, for the past four years, for the past six years actually, been working on constantly shifting ground. That has to change. We bring teamwork back when each board member understands their professional responsibility as a board member. It is not about political agenda, it is not about a personal agenda. It is not about telling the principal, the superintendent, how to do their job, or the principal who they should hire in their school. Those are all superintendent decisions, and that's where we have gotten ourselves in trouble. I believe that with the right people elected to this board and based on the foundation that we tried to create in response to the Advanced Ed Report that required us to change our culture, we have the opportunity to create a great team, a functional team, a professional team.
I believe, and it is law, that the school board has the constitutional authority and responsibility for what our children are learning. We can't cast off that responsibility to the superintendent or to the principals or to the teachers. That responsibility stops at the board. And what we have now is common core. I don't know how many of you people have read the books for your children, heard about the crazy math, the upside-down history. What they are learning is driving them down emotionally, spiritually, knowledge-wise. They don't have the abilities they used to have, and we have to reverse that. And it starts right here. Now, the school board is also responsible for hiring a superintendent that will carry out those plans. We set the policies, he carries it out. But instead of hiring them wisely with a process where we get to interview and expose the superintendent candidates to the public, we don't have that option. This last superintendent was hired by a text from a board meeting. And he answered in the board meeting with a text, yes. Is that a thorough vetting of a candidate? Hardly. I think it's very important for us, if we care about what our children are learning, we have to hire the right people who share the same philosophies that our children, are individuals who need to be educated. And what they are learning is the most and only important thing that we do in Lee County schools.
I think I'm going to pick the board and how it functions, right? So, you know, one of the courses we teach boards is strategic planning, right? And you may have read the book, Tubby's, The Speed of Trust. So, and we just taught this over the last couple of days to the Greater Fort Myers Chamber of Commerce Board. It has forty-two board members. Can you imagine that? Forty-two board members? And they make it work. So this is what a leadership team looks like when it's dysfunctional. You're supposed to be trying to go in one direction, but all the little arrows, the individuals, are finding their own agendas and going in different ways, right? This is what it looks like when it's absolutely functional. Everyone on the board is one voice, and we're moving it forward. There is speed, there is strength, and the community, trust and credibility. So, I mean, I think Ms. Morgan attempted to do a good job. Forty hours of master communications workshops for the board. Shortly after that master's workshop was over, she goes out of town and they make the most critical vote without her. So that speaks highly to the four board members that made the vote without her, but also why did they leave her out of the picture? Now, the response is that there's two additional new candidates that she represents, that she supports. I support Chris Patrica in her board seat, right, as a new candidate. But we have Ms. Morgan, Chris Patrica, and Jane Kumpel, three white women in, from Vanita Springs area. This is supposed to be a diversity board that represents our community. Fifty-six percent of our students are minorities, fifty-six percent of our families are minorities. What does that mean? Taxation, constitutional taxation without representation. We have to change. We absolutely have to change and not be a fractured county.
That's the end of that section. At this time, all candidates get the same question. And this question is, in fact, I'd like you to come out here and it's your turn, if you choose to. But if you choose to stay there, that's okay too. Look at this. I am the only one who has this leadership experience that I will bring to the board. Vote for me, I repeat, because I am the only one with this leadership experience that I will bring to this board. We'll start again with candidate C. I have a candidate C.
But that was easy. You don't need to vote for me because I'm the only candidate with a bald head. So can I go as I can say? I can't get off of that one? Um, no, seriously. Seriously. Vote for me because I'm the only candidate up here who's seen both sides of what the district does. What do you mean by that? I've been a district administrator, school board principal, teacher, golden apple recipient. On my way, my career was going up, everything was up and to the right. Everything going, got elected to the Cape Coral City Council. And as a district administrator, one of my jobs was director of equity and recruitment. When somebody had a problem, when you see these things that happen at the high schools, or someone had a personnel issue, they had to come see me, and I performed investigations on them. So I sit on this side. So, as it would go, one day, I sit on the other side. Because the very process that was over for a year happened to me. So I know what it's like when you're the person and you have an investigation on you and you feel isolated, and you don't know what's going on, and life jumps up and bites you. And you're like, oh, God, what in the world is going on? And I know how the district works on both sides. So see, one of the jobs we're going to have up here is an adjudicator. That means that when you hear the things that happen, when the people come forward and they have these issues, a lot of times, there was a rubber stamp just to say, okay, well, we're just going to let the state deal with it. I can assure you, having been on the other side, that will never happen. I'm going to take a critical look because we are dealing with a person's livelihood. A livelihood. I get it now, I really get it. I mean, God had these conversations. I get it, why I had to go through that. So yes, I know all of the good side, but I know what happens on the other side. And I will definitely be fair to everyone. Thank you.
Can I repeat that question in your board? Do you want you to repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I forgot what you said.
Okay, the question is, vote for me. Vote for Ms. Morgan. Because she's the only one who brings this experience to the board. Why should you do it for twenty?
I was on a high-performing school district board for two terms, working with a high-performing superintendent. I know what a great team can do to support quality education on the ground. And ever since I came onto this board, I have had that vision in my head. And I have worked very hard to make these steps, move this board forward into an environment and culture that would support people on the ground. I fought for the first ten years on the board to get a strategic plan. Dr. Manaya talked about getting all of the arrows going in the same direction. We, in fact, were able to accomplish that with our strategic plan. But we still had a problem with leadership at the top. Once we had the accreditation report as board chair, I worked very hard to create an environment in which we could come together and sort out how we were going to work as a team. And as I said, I think that's a very fragile foundation that we still have. I am absolutely committed to continuing this kind of work because I think by luck, or I won't say good work, I think we have a terrific superintendent. I think we have a superintendent who's a long-term superintendent, someone who could retire and not be forced out. And I would like to be part of the team because I believe I know how to support quality superintendent, and I know how to work on a quality board. I am a team player, and I know how to work in a team environment. Thank you.
I love teams. I've worked on teams all my life, created teams. But you have to have somebody who's a leader, a CEO. And I started several companies myself. I've had fifteen-hundred employees myself. I was elected to be the chair of the Internet Electronics Association Board in Silicon Valley, which is eighteen-hundred companies. And you try leading those guys around, the head of Apple, Silicon Valley companies of all types. It was quite a task. And so I was also selected to be on a different kind of board. And that was the IRS Commissioners Advisory Group by George H.W. Bush. Now, that one is a little more hostile environment, and I wondered whether I should go in and try and fix it at all. But I did go, it was very interesting. That was a two-year situation in DC. And then I've also been asked by them to go to Europe, to represent the United States with a small group of people, thirteen business leaders, who went to Europe in advance of the EU and visit the various countries and leaders of those countries, from the Bundestag to the EU and in all different countries, to decide on what we thought would be the ramifications of the EU. And we could never figure it out, and obviously, they never did either. So that worked out. But I've had a lot of team-building experience in sports as well. I was on the Governor's Council for Physical Fitness and Sports and was the Western Region Leader for teaching water skiing in the West. So I've had all kinds of sports, business, government, background, large, small. And I even advised a venture fund. So I know what it is to make big decisions and risk your own skin on it. So those skills, I think, are very necessary in this environment. We have to be able to lock arms, but we have to be going somewhere. You can't follow somebody who's not leading. And that's what we need here, is leadership. Thank you.
Vote for me, because. You know, this is one of my favorite quotes, right? If we teach today as we taught yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow. That's a John Dewey quote, right? If we teach today as we taught yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow. You know, Chris, in a prior debate, said that she wants to get rid of a hundred-and-fifty-two million dollars in computer budget line item, right? I'm taking two courses from Coursera via my smartphone, right? You probably have seen your children, your grandchildren, your nieces and nephews. They are more in tune with technology than will ever be. The Google guy came in, the Innovation Education Evangelist from Google, was just here two weeks ago. I had the opportunity to have a private practice with him. And Google is trying to create this school that starts with coding from the elementary school all the way on up to high school, right? And his view is that this latest and greatest smartphone is the worst technology that your three-year-old or your five-year-old will ever have for the rest of their life, right? They're going to walk into a thrift store twenty years from now and buy it for twenty-five cents just because it's like a little novelty, right? So what does that mean? In education, I've been at the forefront of innovation, technology, and corporate education. I've been watching it in higher education. My degree is in higher education administration, managing and running academic schools. And now I'm seeing how education across the country is being a big benefit to K-12. It doesn't remove the teacher. It absolutely provides additional support for the teacher to detect skill gaps. So if we still have twenty students in a class, we can detect skill gaps and move much quicker, right? So I am the only candidate that understands twenty-first century education and its application in our district.
So what does thirty-eight years in the classroom spanning five decades, so what does that do for a potential candidate or actually a potential member of the school board? I'll tell you what it does. It provides all kinds of skills such as management. My certain teachers are managers. Organization. When I lived in Texas, I was for nineteen years a department chair at a large high school in suburban Dallas. And I supervised fifteen teachers. We worked as a team, and we were the strongest department in the school, I'm happy to say. I was involved, I have a broad spectrum of knowledge of what it takes, and not just in the classroom, because I was fortunate enough, when I was in Texas, to be involved with curriculum writing, curriculum alignment. I was on several textbook adoption committees. I hired... I hired in my department, I had input into hiring, I had input into scheduling. I know how complicated these personnel issues can be. I also was part of the leadership team for those 19 years. And in that school, the leadership team did not rubber stamp. The leadership team actually had input into site-based decision-making. All of those ideas, plus what I've learned about Lee County from being in Astero High School. I was elected as the TAO for the Teacher Union Representative. I did that for five years. Also, I'm very proud of the academic, the phenomenal academic Wildcat program that I initiated at Astero to recognize top scholars. Thank you.
All right. Move on to the next section. And this is on the Personnel and Instruction Process. The first question, you'll start with candidate D. Move on there. I know it was a little bit of one there, but candidate D, you start right. Actually, somebody, one of the candidates already alluded to this question. So, Common Core Standards. A teacher providing instruction using traditional standards emphasizing mainly content. A teacher providing instruction using Common Core standards emphasizes both content and skills. Well, it's a myth or a reality, but as soon as the question came. Are you in favor or against the use of Common Core that emphasizes teaching of both content and skills? Why? If you are against Common Core, why would you propose as a notary? And there are some standards of Common Core that you don't like. So candidate D.
I support standards. We're living in the 21st century. Our children are moving from one city to another, from one state to another. Some will be working in Hong Kong, some will be working in Australia. We need to raise our kids ready to work and be successful in an international environment. That means that we should be benchmarking the skills that our children are acquiring against a national and international standard. So I feel very strongly that we should have standards. The fact of the matter is, information is available to everybody. We don't, we need to learn content, but we don't need to learn it all. We need to learn how to use the content that we have at our fingertips. I think what has been particularly difficult about introducing standards has been the way it was introduced. I think that we asked a lot of people who are in the classroom to start teaching a new way without providing the kind of support and services, professional development, they needed to feel competent in the classroom. I think that... Yeah, I think that we let people down. And I think that's why we've had a lot of pushback on the math. Parents don't understand, students don't understand, and teachers don't understand. We have failed to educate the community about what we are doing and why we are doing it and why it is so important for kids. I do support the superintendent's plan to create standards for Lee County because those will recognize where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, and tailor our curriculum and our expectations to meet the students where they are and not where somebody tells us they should be at a particular point in time. Thank you.
There's a little question for you, remember now?
Oh, different one?
Yes. But you can still have a chance later on. Yes, this is your question, sorry. It's about retention. Our district has lost two key areas, and that's been mentioned here and there. We have had a huge turnover of the superintendent in the last 10 years or so, a huge turnover in the number of superintendents. We've been turning every now and then. The teachers also, we have lost so many, 27% of the first-year teachers, they go, and 49 after five years or so. As a board member, what would you do to have the retention of both the superintendent and the teachers?
This is a critical problem. Teachers across the nation are quitting their professions. Why? Because nationally, we've imposed Common Core, which includes the Gordian Knot that causes a pressure cooker in the classroom, and that's the BAM scores. We are grading and hiring our teachers based on a score that their children receive, which means all the teachers are teaching due to tests. And they don't like it. Teachers want to teach to see the light go on in Little Johnny's eyes. They don't want to be spending 20% of their time teaching and 80% of their time doing bookwork, adding numbers, doing charts and graphs, to try and test them and test them and test them until they melt away, till they eat Ritalin. Recession, recess was taken away because they needed more time to test. And this is driving children to more and more behavioral problems. You're a little boy, five, six, seven years old, you need your time outside. In Finland, for instance, they have 15 minutes between each class. They have no high-stakes testing until a child reaches the age of 16. So those are the ways that, in Finland, they are beating us. They're beating us back. And all we have to do is look to the examples of what works. And instead, we're driving the other direction. Let's do more testing, more analysis, let's find out this group against that group. No, what we've gotta do is give our children a chance to the children. They didn't even start them in school until they're seven, in Finland. So we need to relieve the pressure cooker in the classroom, give the teacher more authority over what they're doing, a chance to use their craft, to see it working and to be the examples that they've always been since America was born. And we need to make sure that that element of trust is conveyed from the parents, from the administration. Teachers should be held up as the wonderful examples they are and throughout history have been. Everybody remembers their teachers. And the teachers need to be given that chance to show that, that talent. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate A. This question is on migrant children. Yes. America is the home of migrant children, some of them were here illegally. Some of these may be found right here in our district. They're beautiful coming. Are you in favor of providing the same educational services and opportunities for all children, including those who are illegal? Or should we discriminate against them? Please explain your answer.
Yes, yes. Well, it is our responsibility to educate all the children that are in our district, right? We have not made a policy, either from state or federal government, that we will not educate K-12 students, right? There's issues regarding how you get a scholarship to someone that's not a documented resident here. And in those cases, there are certain things that the Mexican-American Legal Fund is doing to clear that way, right? But in terms of K-12, it's absolutely our responsibility. The legal status of that child is something that we don't have to look at from a school board perspective. And it's definitely something that adds to more students in our area when those migrant families come in to support the fields across Florida, right? The Amokalee Community Charter School, they've got anything from, the growers have organized anything from daycares to elementary schools to middle schools. My daughter taught at the elementary school just last year. She taught fourth grade. And 98% of her students were Latino. 98% of her students spoke Spanish and English. And what was interesting, though, is that in that school, they focused, from an academic perspective, they focused on helping the children learn language and learn how to read because once the kids mastered English, they were just as capable as those students that understood English. So I support continuing to educate our migrant children in the community. And I think we need to look into that population a little more because the kind of programs that we have in Lee County are not the kind of programs that they're already using in Coguier County.
Thank you. Candidate B. It's about testing and the opt-out process. I see Mr. John Armstrong is here. There has been strong opposition here in Lee County and nationwide about the excessive testing. And it came here last year or sometime earlier on. It, Lee County was in the forefront of the opting-out process. This, however, became counterproductive because it kind of affected how our students graduate. We don't want kids to graduate without everything. You know the details. This issue is going to come up again when you're a member of the board. How do you want to deal with it? And are you opposed or for the testing process? And what alternatives would you suggest? Thank you.
I believe that the vote that was taken, I think it's almost going on two years ago now, was extremely unfortunate because it underscored the fact that board members were voting emotionally rather than voting rationally. Because, you know, excuse me for going back to my literature background, but it was all well and good for Henry David Thoreau to be, to engage in civil disobedience. And his neighbors paid his taxes and then he went on. But you know what, as a school board, we don't have that luxury. There may be things that we believe in very, very strongly as a person, but we're there as a group that is to obey the laws. So first of all, we can't opt out just as a school board and arbitrarily say, well, we're just not gonna do that. What happened, of course, with Lee's school board is that that was rescinded and the rest is history. What I will say is that the testing, there's been too much testing. It's, teachers and students are worth more than a number, an arbitrary number, like a BAM score or a two on an FSA. We need to get back to a kind of curriculum that engages the students, that's creative. And I also actually agree with what Kathleen said earlier, that I too am very much in favor of the Lee standards of excellence that Dr. Atkins favors right now. I think that going back to something that is locally operated makes much more sense. Thank you.
Candidate C. One effective tool that is commonly used to measure the success of a school district is the graduation rate. As of now, only 74% and after this week, we'll get more statistics, 74% of our high school seniors graduated. This means that about a quarter of our students either dropped out or did not complete high school, which is very detrimental to our community. This is, what are your proportions in helping with the improvement of our graduation rates?
The graduation rate, here's something that you're gonna hear, I'll say it for a while, it's extremely radical. Track with me. Everyone knows that the way the school systems are set up, they're set up that Little Johnny or Jill will start and they're gonna end up graduating and moving on to college. It's just kind of how we've been thinking along the way. But if you look at the data, that couldn't be further from the truth. Because what has happened throughout time is only about four out of 10 actually graduate and go on to college. But what's this radical idea? The radical idea is something that we've talked about. See, we're missing an opportunity in the vocational area. I think one thing that we can pinpoint, it doesn't matter whether you're majority or minority, but there are some students out there who have skills and they need to go down a vocational track instead of forcing them into an academic track that they're really not interested in. And what, how this message relays based on one of the generations. See, I'm a late baby born, there's a generation, a silent generation out there that's kind of not following on. But if you start talking to Generation X, Generation Y, Millennials, they get it. So in the meantime, the board has to have this conversation. You say, well, how are you gonna do that? There's no money. But you understand, from the Cape Coral experience, there are a number of vacant buildings that we can have a public-private partnership with. And it won't take much to start talking about construction or roofing or auto mechanics without getting into this, this elaborate in costs. So what are you saying, Dr. Dean, in summary? Yes, we do need to address the issue whether or not we're meeting the needs on an academic standpoint. That is a portion of the graduation rate. But what has not been talked about are those children, when they hit 15 and 16, they have their minds made up. And if we open an avenue with something of their interest that will benefit not only them but the community, then you will see these numbers go up. So I hope you'll know with me, all right? I mean, this is a real conversation. You know, I could give you one of those great, you know, politician's speeches, but that's where it happens. And I look forward to having that conversation with the board to see if that's a policy of admission, man. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the end of that section, but before we proceed to the next part, Dan Sinclair, if you can give out these cards to the audience. If you have any questions, just put up your hand and Dan Sinclair will come around and give you their pens here also. All right. Now, at this time, all those issues, you are supposed to address any of those issues, all of them or whatever you want. And again, we start with candidate D.
Thank you. I'm gonna talk about the testing. First of all, I want to make it clear that when the board voted to opt out, it was a 3-2 vote and I was not in support of the opt-out agreement because I felt it was an emotional, seat-of-the-pants decision, which had become characteristic of the board. I think the problem with the testing comes, starts at the state. The state's responsibility is to set policy with respect to what's happening in the local districts. But it has gotten itself involved in the process of education at the local level. So not only do they say that we should be held accountable, and I think we should, we get taxpayer dollars, we should be held accountable, but they're telling us how to do it and they're doing it in such a way that is disruptive of the traditional academic process that we have in place. So it has been very difficult. Now, at the local level, I can only reiterate what I said earlier because we have failed to respond in a positive and supportive way to the state mandates. We have really hurt the ability of our teachers and our principals to handle this constant turnover, change of expectations that's been thrown on us by the state. And so I go back to what I said earlier. I think what is really important is that we set standards that are responsive to the needs and abilities of our children here in Lee County. And we benchmark those to national and international standards. And let teachers figure out how to teach to those standards on the ground. I think that, I'm an advocate for getting rid of these state tests only because they have not been shown to be reliable and verifiable. Thank you.
One of the issues that really bothers me is, like many have mentioned, emotional decision-making. Decision should be fact-based. We have $1.3 billion of yours to spend. Nearly half of all your tax dollars come to the schools, if you weren't aware. And yet, we talked also, we go mentioned, that we were spending $152 million, it's actually $154,105,000 is budgeted for hardware alone. Typically, when you have a hardware expense, you have to multiply it by seven because you have all the ancillary expenses, the software, the licenses, the technicians, the space, and then replacement within two years. So we're buying computers that will most likely be antiquated very shortly. And if we look at the studies that are out there on what are children doing with computers to study, is it better or is it worse than books? Did they look at that? Was there a cost-benefit ratio analyzed there? No, there wasn't. And furthermore, the studies I'm seeing now, West Point just published one just recently that said that studying with a computer is not as good as studying with a book. It's not as rich an experience, people don't remember as much. And they tested this out with three test classrooms. They did a pilot study on it, which we never do. We just suddenly... We just suddenly say, oh, I think computers are great because my kids like my cellphone. Well, no. Actually, child development experts are telling us that the prefrontal cortex develops in a certain way. And by rote memorization, we actually learn the foundational elements of logic that we can utilize for the next step. And this is what we're missing by using technology too early. It's like using a calculator constantly. You don't remember how to multiply after you use it too much. Do we want them to have those basic building blocks and logic built in them as these child development experts tell us? Or do we want to simply Google everything and get the answer? By the way, my brother-in-law is vice president of Google.
Ah, okay, let's see. Yeah, I think I want to go back to retention, right? So we've got the issue of teacher retention. Twenty-seven percent of our first-year teachers are leaving. After five years, forty-nine percent. This was a presentation done by the superintendent to the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee. And I know, I've heard, right? And I've seen it in other presentations, that, oh yeah, well, those are national statistics, right? It's almost like saying, well, we're getting enough, everybody else is getting enough, so it's okay, right? It's absolutely not okay. If you're going to have a sustainable organization where your primary resource and asset and talent is your teacher, that should be our number-one issue that we are focused on. And the feedback that you probably get, that I get from teachers is, they're not being listened to. They do not feel that they are part of the system that really respects them, right? I've got instructors all over the world, right? I'm teaching right now in China, in London, in Mexico. This month, this month, right? I could not imagine not taking care of my resources in the best way possible. They are the talent. And in many cases, it's not the salary or the price of that resource, right? It's the surround. How much are we respecting them and listening to what they need, right? So I think we should absolutely do much better as a school district. If we want to beat national averages, let's beat the national averages on retention. Because there's no way we can be sustainable. There's no way a learning organization can keep institutional knowledge and be sustainable if you've got that much churn, right?
I'd like to go back to the graduation rates and some ideas, some proactive ideas that I have to benefit the school district. We have seventy percent of our students in Lee County on free or reduced lunch. And studies have shown that there is a definite correlation between the economically disadvantaged students versus the, let's say, middle-class student. So we have a large population of economically disadvantaged. Many of those economically disadvantaged students are also English language learners. So now we have two problems and we find that both of those subgroups are extremely low. So, most of the time when people talk about, well, what are we going to do to boost our rate of graduation? We talk about mentoring and mentoring students. And I know about this firsthand because my kick-stock in children, my teeth just graduated. So that's an excellent program that begins for students in either seventh grade or ninth grade. But you know what? It's too late for many of these kids. The brain develops ninety percent by age three. Think about your poor children. Think about these children, they are not getting the verbal enrichment. It doesn't matter if it's verbal enrichment in English or in their native tongue. Many of them do not have proper nutrition. There are so many things that cause that early group to not be able to succeed or not be as ready for kindergarten as their better-off peers. Well, what can we do? The school district can't solve all the problems. We need to work, yeah, okay. We need to work in tandem with all the community groups and get some money for our disadvantaged areas in the county.
I wanted to hit upon the Common Core. And I continue to say to those of you all that continue to come out, what has been strikingly amazing to me, and I understand it now, we are not starting from the same point when we talk about definitions of words. So one of the things that I'm going to bring to the board is we're just going to sit down and talk about these issues. Literally, go through a session, ask the board, let's talk about what common definition we have. That's a good segue to Common Core. I respect everyone's opinion. But when I first came on, it's just amazing how it's just been misrepresented out throughout the community. Common Core has four tenants, four tenants, four pieces. This is Derek Donnell talking now, alright? So just watch. There's the standards piece. Do know that we talk about standards, effective standards, proactive standards, relative standards, that's the thing going on and that's a conversation we can continue to have. Everybody has and wants good standards. The next piece to this Common Core is curriculum. What's being taught? Now, I love this smartphone because right now you can go on something called CPOMs.org if you all can fact-check me so I won't be on Rachel Maddow. Or you can go into Lee County School District and look at the academic plan. Look at the civics, look at the U.S. history, and look at what's being taught. You can just see it right now, that's curriculum piece. Yes, there could be some modifications there. The third piece we have here is what we're talking about, about the retention of teachers, is how you instruct, the delivery of instruction. That's what gets me all excited about recruiting teachers and more so retaining teachers. Because it doesn't matter, you can have all the standards and curriculum you want to. If you don't have a highly effective teacher, this means nothing. But now the fourth piece that gets all the attention is the assessment, but specifically high-stakes testing. There is an opportunity. Yes, we have to play by the rules of the state, but you can look at some of the tests that our third graders take. It's an hour and a half, it's just ridiculous. We have an opportunity to look at even this high-stakes testing that I don't agree with, make some modifications at the district level to ease the amount of testing. So it's just a lot, it's good. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. This is the one I just don't really like. But I want to say on this disclaimer, I am just the voice of the community. And the community felt maybe you need to clarify a few issues here and there. And that's why I am doing this. I tried to put them in the wording that was given, providing them. So this starts with Mrs. Watkins. And there have been very several questions on this issue. Can you comment on the funding of your campaign when you learn for public office in California? Can you shed some light on this issue? You guys hear the question? Let me repeat. There have been several questions related to the funding of your campaign when you learn for public office in California.
Fun D?
Yeah, F-U-N-D. I, money. Can you shed light on this issue?
Sure.
Please.
I ran for state senate in California because the flood agency there, Second Amendment flood control agency, was attempting to flood our community on purpose so that a well-funded politician could build in a flood zone, twenty-foot-deep flood zone without telling the people. And I ran and I got $2 million. And I had absolutely no question, I had no idea what you're talking about.
I don't know, just another question to you.
There was no question at all. I ran a good campaign. Unfortunately, I lost, I won the primary, but I lost the general. It was not my side of the coin, it's a virtually union town. So I didn't win.
As I said, I'm just the voice, I'm just reading the questions. Alright. Next one goes to Dr. Minaj.
Please, about the senior questions?
Yeah?
Senior questions.
Dr. Minaj. You lived in this community for three years, from 1988 and you left in 1991. Somebody did their research very well. You did not seek political office at that time. You then left for California and stayed there for twenty years until 2013. And then you came back. And now you want to be in a political office after three years here. What makes you qualified to be the voice of the people only after being here for three years, after being away for twenty years?
Great question. Something to do with your home. In eight, you know, it was in eighty-eight, eighty-nine to ninety-one, I was a young professional, right? So in fact, I had worked with AT&amp;T, moved from South Florida to headquarters in New Jersey. From AT&amp;T, New Jersey, to New Orleans, worked in New Orleans. And that's when I met my fiance, who's become, my wife. And we were looking for places to live throughout the country. And we found Southwest Florida. And we thought, you know what? These poor Southwest Florida, beautiful. This was in Idaho, right? And we came during season. So we thought, oh my God, what a thriving area, right? Why don't we open a business here? And so we did. We left corporate jobs, we came here in season. And we had two babies here. So my babies were born in Cape Coral. Our babies were born in Cape Coral. And then season stopped, right? And then from somebody that was looking for a much larger kind of career, I went back to AT&amp;T and started an international career. I became an international sales and sales management instructor first for the Caribbean and Latin America. And I was in California for twenty years. From there, Accenture, then I became Director of Education Services for AT&amp;T, Lusinavaya, for the Caribbean and Latin America. Accenture took our team over in about the early 2000s. And I moved to Singapore to start Accenture Learning's services for learning in Asian Japan. I was the director of Asian Japan. It was supposed to take me three years to do that. In the meantime, I had gotten my MBA from Vanderbilt. So when we came back to the U.S. from Singapore, it only took me seven months to get an operational team in Asia. I came back to global assignments. And while I was on my global assignments, I started my doctorate at the University of Pennsylvania. Only then, after completing my doctorate, did we move to California. And, well, sorry, didn't get a chance to. Give you the rest.
But there is something you'd like to clarify on this issue? You can leave that, I suppose you can. So you still get a chance later on, okay? Ben Sivon. Records show that you have extensive teaching experience. There's very little evidence of your administrative experience. What makes you think that you are now qualified to lead from the top after not going through the system? Let me be there, love. Okay. Let me read the whole question again. Records show that you have extensive teaching experience, but there is no evidence of any other administrative possession that you have held. What makes you think that you are now qualified to lead the district from the top?
Well, let me start by asking what makes Donald Trump think he's qualified when he's never held a government office? You know what? If you keep the school board in the hands of only the CEOs, only the politicians, only the people that are in the good old boy network and are hand-chosen by others, if you keep the school board with people who have ideological agendas, then you have what we have now, folks. We need a breath of fresh air. I was, I am not a CEO. I did, I never started a company. I spent, except for having my children taking some time off from 1969, when I graduated college, through 2014 as a teacher. I was never interested. I have a master's degree, but I was never interested in being an administrator. I loved the classroom. I have a broad view of what a school district is like. And you know what? I'm smart. I do my homework and I do my research. And so if I don't know the answer to, let's say, a banking question or a financial question, I will go straight to Dr. Amy Decimore and sit down with her, she's wonderful, I've had conferences with her before. And I'll say, I have a problem with this, help me understand it. And I know that she can explain it to me. So I have every confidence in myself and I hope that all of you will have every confidence in someone who is a career teacher and kept on the same path for five decades.
The whole idea about these questions is to clarify this issue from the community and I'm glad the community gets a chance, and the county gets a chance to address it. Dr. Minaj, it's your turn. Over the years, records show you have been an outstanding teacher, administrator. You have received many awards in that respect. There's a bar. There was one issue somewhere, 2010, 2011, that seems to be a saga. If you choose to, can you comment on it and any thoughts of that? I don't know what it is, but there's something they're saying.
Yes, that issue was, I talked about it earlier when I was talking to you. In 2011, there was an investigation that was done on me and it started, for those of you all who remember, I was there, it started with some kind of anonymous letter that went to the state. And I can remember those days, it's like, it's surreal. I was sitting at my office and a person from the district came and they said, we need to talk to you. And I immediately thought, oh, this is one of my employees that she had told me that she was having a problem with her husband. I'm like, sure, what do you want to talk about? I can tell you that it's a great employee. And she said, no, we need to talk about you. I said, me? So I remember, just like yesterday, she gave me some papers. She said, can you tell me about these sixteen students? I'm like, well, no, I wasn't, I don't, I know three of them. But I wasn't here, I was at the other school. So she was like, okay. It lasted for like thirty minutes. So I'm like, okay, great. So I went back to work. So the next day was, that was Thursday, Friday, I went back and came back to work and I got a call about five o'clock, I was still in my office. And they said, well, we just want you to stay home, don't come back. We got some things to look at. I'm like, well, okay. So I was sitting there waiting for, just waiting to go back to work. Kept telling my wife, waiting to go back to work, waiting to go back to work. And I'm like, well, I told about the three students. And I'm like, well, well, let's just say that six months later, four months later, I went to a lawyer's office and thanked God for my dad. I told him, well, you better get a lawyer because you never know how these things are going to come up. And that two-page paper was an investigation about this thing. And I remember sitting there going, who is that? So the way it ended, my wife said, Derek, just go ahead, babe. You just respond to all of them. And I responded, it is out there because I know, because I was in the meantime running for office at Cape Coral. I thought, this is sure going to take me. But it really turned out helping me because then the people read it said, okay, Dr. Dean, and they voted for me. So now they're finished and I'm back and let's go.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Morgan, this is the last one that goes to you. The new split agent was appointed when you are the chairperson of the board. At that time, you are in favor of a national website, but your other members of the board were not with you. They waited until you were out of the country and they went ahead and appointed the split agent, what you did not want to do. Now, what do they say about the respect for your leadership? Evidently, you did not work very well with them. And what makes you think you work well with a new board?
People ask me, why am I doing this again? It's been, it's been a tough four years. I think if you watch me at the board table, if you see me in public, you will see someone who has been patient, respectful of others, always bringing things to the table for a conversation and asking for time to consider before a rush to judgment is made. In my opinion, there was a seat-of-the-pants decision when Dr. Atkins was given a contract in my absence. It was a rush to judgment. We may have lucked out, but that doesn't speak well about the people on the board and how they made decisions at that time. I have been a board chair, I was a board chair in New York. I was a board chair here. When I was a board chair here, we were productive in our work. We were productive in We were productive in creating a new working environment and trying to create a culture where we could get along together. The fact of the matter is, there was someone on that board who did not respect me, did not trust me, and wanted to, uh, be a leader. And, and did so. And infuriated the community in the process to the point where we have lost ground because the community doesn't respect our ability to work together as a board to reach well-considered, rational decisions. So we are going to have to give the public another year or two with our superintendent and demonstrate that we can be responsive, respectful, thoughtful people in the conduct of our business. Thank you.
I just feel honored that these candidates have been able to address these issues so clearly and so openly. Please come for them. And thank you so much. I really appreciate it personally. At this point, we turn to the questions from the audience. And we have received very many questions. The way I have, we have decided this place. Look at, we're not going to act any questions. They were checked, a deliberate question is appropriate, there's no inappropriate question. So Dan will give candidates two questions and they can address both questions, whichever questions they are. They will read out the questions. I don't know, they come from the audience. And if you don't do it, address what you want, okay? But please respect the audience, how they can, can you give them a?
I'm not nervous about his little smile.
Why can't it seem to look at it? So I'm just like, all right. Just hand it them over. I'm not there to do that work. Okay, here.
Yeah, just touch it. Yeah, just give them.
Okay, I will, I know. But there's some of them have four questions, some of them not.
No, no, they, they just give them out the way they are. Just respecting the mood, you have them. Let, let it just progress.
All right. So wait a minute, let's just specify ideas.
Okay, if it's specified to the person, please give this to the person.
Sure.
And let, let the candidates be free to address whatever issues they may want. And they, yes.
I already have questions for you, so I have no idea. I apologize if I'm getting some wrong questions.
And while we are at it, we must respect and say thank you so much to the audience because the more participation we get, the better. And so many questions have been emailed to us, all those questions. And it's been just a gift for experience. And if your question was not addressed, we have another event coming up. You can address whatever you want. Done, okay? Done? All right. Not necessarily, just look at the card, I don't even know the questions, I'll pick what you think. Feel free to address them. And we'll start, we'll start, we'll start with the E and then we move back this way. And just to clarify, the final comments, we'll start again with the E, but you're moving this way. The final comments, not now.
Do you want me to read the questions?
No, let them read.
No, let them read the questions.
I will read the question. How do you propose to finance our needs for our new schools? Well, first of all, I think it's very important to have the data and do the analysis about where the schools are needed, very carefully. We've heard a lot of clamoring for schools of Bonita. Well, that may be right, but I need to look at the data and make sure that our growth projections are accurate and that we don't need it in Lehigh for this. There are lots of growth areas here and you have to be very careful not to just hear clamoring from a community and exceed to the wishes without doing our data. Now, we do need a bunch of schools coming up. And we need, after we evaluate where we need the schools, we need to fund those schools. Now, funding the schools has to come from the capital budget. And as I mentioned, we, we are already spending one hundred fifty-four million dollars just on computers, on hardware. And we're giving all of our students computers. Many communities have done this before and they've all counseled us not to do this because it's not a working situation. That would free up a lot of money. Hundred fifty-four million dollars is enough to build three to five schools, depending on whether it's elementary, middle, or high. So those are very important, um, dollars to gain on our busing contracts. We talked about having local schools, neighborhood schools. If we're able to cut down on our busing expenditures, we could perhaps get another twenty million dollars a year. And that's from the administration's response, from, from Dr. Atkins, I met with him on that subject. There are plenty of areas where we are conducting wasteful spending endeavors. And I think it's very, very important that before we will reach out into the taxpayers' pockets, that we make certain that we have done the best job we can with the dollars we have. And I do not believe this board has done the same.
Any other questions over the future?
Well, I'm going to try to move through these quickly. Why is the board not making decisions for the people? I think the board does make decisions for the people. We don't always make decisions with which, that everybody is happy with. I think one of the problems that we have had is a communication problem. We have not been shown to be listening carefully and responding thoughtfully. And I think there needs to be more of that. But I, I do, I believe the people, our people are our children. And I believe that the superintendent is making recommendations to us that are in the best interest of children. And I believe that individual board members and as a board are trying to make the best decisions for the children in our district. I believe this, more, more vocational education for our students. Yes, I believe there should be more vocational education for our students. Do you feel there needs to be more education on STDs, teen pregnancy, open to parents and students to educate? I will be very honest, I don't know at what point in our health curriculum, our health, that education continuum, we address these questions. I don't know if parents are involved and I don't know what kind of education is provided. I would be happy to, whoever asked the question came to me afterwards and gave me their name, I would be happy to get more information. Do you think Lee County schools need to bring back a program like WeHawks? What are WeHawks?
It's a program that was for teen pregnancy moms. Instead of just going to LAMP, they also had at Cape Coral High, you could go to school, take your kid. So if you were a teen pregnant mom who were able to still graduate, that's what kept me in high school, was the WeHawks program.
Just like Amity Chandler, I think. Anyway, um, or in a regular school rather than just LAMP. Well, I know LAMP. I think LAMP, uh, does a terrific job, as, as you know. I didn't know what WeHawks was and I have, uh, would have no problem with the program you described. I'd love to know more about it.
All right, I have, I have a lot of these, but I can go, you know, I'll go real quick. It says, have stand-up if they, if you promote Common Core, I've explained that, whoever wrote this, I gave you RT Common Core. If this one has three parts, yes, no, do I believe that Muslims can be on the board? You know, I don't deal with ethnicity, I deal with qualifications. Do I pledge, believe that we should pledge to schools? Yes, and we do it. Do I believe in prayer? Yes, and we do it. Do you have prayer days? What will be your top priority? I've already talked about that, it's about retention of teachers, looking at student assignment for those transportation dollars, and a piece we talked about, safety.
What was your answer on the Muslim? I wrote that question.
Oh, you did? Yes, I don't deal with ethnicity, right? We do about.
Maybe you should be on the board to teach, teach, to re-awake?
I don't did, I don't discriminate at all. I don't deal with anybody's ethnicity, Americans is wrong. With social media becoming a big part of students' lives, do you feel that it's a place in the classroom? Social media is already part of our classrooms and that's what we're doing. It's just a way that we have to do it and we have to be very strategic. And then this one has to do with the Constitution. Do you believe that we have been taught that kids are perverted by the board? Do you believe that the board has the responsibility of what that it being taught is truthful? There's a lot in this question, whoever sent this one, yes, yes, and yes. And I hope whoever wrote this one had a chance to look at the academic plan and see exactly what is being taught. And I'd love to have that conversation. See that with my father.
All right, well, I have two questions here and one of them is going to require somewhat of a long answer. It's about securing the revenue stream. Many of the candidates have said that recurring revenue stream is needed. How do I plan to make and retain the revenue stream? All right, well, that, this goes back, of course, to the fact that the school district is six hundred million dollars in debt. And we have a deepening hole in debt with, um, fifty-one million dollars a year last year just paid in, in debt service. The Bonita School, and I'll, I'll just use that as an example, that's kind of an ongoing issue. But let's say the next school, called School LLL, is going to be financed by certificates of participation. And that in effect, easy example is you can compare it to a credit card. And we all know what happens when we don't pay off our credit card bills, the interest builds. And so a school that might cost something like sixty or seventy million dollars will, on a credit card, cost over a hundred million dollars. I don't think that that's a responsible way to govern our school system. I think we need to be fiscally responsible. The method that I find to be, um, most attractive is half-cent sales tax. Now, a lot of people have said, well, once you put in a, and of course, this needs to go to the voters. But a lot of people have said, well, once you put in a half-cent sales tax, it'll never go away. Well, that's not true. It can, it can be done without, um, the time that it expires. But you can also put it in and say, this is for a three-year period, this is for a five-year period. The half-cent sales tax would generate enough for a school, plus thirty percent would be paid by our visiting tourists instead of just the county homeowners.
This has a rather, uh, context. Although technology is a way of the future, children are exposed to devices earlier and earlier today. But in the classroom, it is preferred to conduct the majority of their learning experience attached to a screen, or will some traditional face-to-face learning based on individual needs be available? They are so saturated by technology at home and when interacting with friends, how do we maintain a balance, not lose the social aspect of the educational experience? Thanks. And, and this, this goes to, um, it was interesting, uh, one of the reasons, I threw my name in the hat on August fifth, right? About six weeks earlier, uh, the, uh, the district had set up a meeting with me, or we, a, a meeting for me with, uh, what I thought we were just going to talk about, um, virtual education with, with a couple of folks. So as the meeting got closer and closer and closer, uh, I kept calling, hey, is the meeting on? Is the meeting on? The day before, I called, no answer. Two hours before the meeting, I called, say, by the way, I'm not going to go because apparently the meeting's set up. He said, oh, Dr. Manaya, we're, we're, we're ready for you. So I get there, right? So we get into a little classroom and, and I'm sitting there and there's a number of other district people there in the classroom. And we're waiting. And I said, well, who are we waiting for? Oh, the facilitator. And so waited a couple more minutes and then I asked the person next to me, well, who's the facilitator? They looked at that little sheet, it was somebody named Dr. Manaya. So I turned my little chair in front of everybody, right, like this. And we've got, uh, Director of Education for middle school, Director of Education Curriculum for high school, we've got the virtual schools, we've got the virtual school principal there, we've got the IT department there. And we start talking about blended learning, virtual technology, virtual learning. And I could tell that they were not talking to each other. The IT team wasn't talking to the curriculum team, wasn't talking to the virtual school team. And the more I dug, I could see it's completely disconnected, right? When it is done right, your teachers absolutely have a, a trajectory to prepare for their students. And when you use technology, it's in a blended learning environment where the traditional classroom is still a critical part. And now you have other tools that the teachers know how to use to the benefit of that student. It's called personalized learning, where you can create a learning path for an individual student so that they accelerate and, and, and work through their curriculum even more. So.
All right.
Thank you. And I don't have session. Pretty soon getting the closing remarks, that we need, or we've read them. Give the candidates a chance to get their closing remarks. Not yet. While we are at it, give them a few sessions to prepare their closing remarks. Let us introduce the other candidates who are here and give them, what did you tell me, Mike? How long? One minute. Any other candidate, say one minute, just start up and say we are, and then we can get the closing remarks.
Chris Patrick Ali, County School Board District Three. Most of you here can't vote for me because you don't live in Astero, Bonita Springs, South Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach. So I'd like to turn the attention to the New Majority Alliance, who was kind enough to host a debate in District Three last week. And I am very, very grateful for the time and effort that you put into that. So can, can we give them a hand, please?
Please, 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 number one. One by one. So give them one, one minute. Say we are, one minute.
My name's Charlie, I'm running for the Lee County School District Two. That is the seat that Mrs. Dozier has had since, uh, two thousand. If you live in central Fort Myers, I'd like to hear it from you. I'd like to speak with you and give you some ideas and get your ideas. Because basically, I want to make it about kids, not politics, and I want to represent, not government.
Thank you.
I'm good, Tom. My name is Diane Sabrosi and I am your candidate, running for Lee County Commissioner, District Five. And as you know, yeah, we are a, uh, proud to be. As you know, we are not a single-member district when it comes to county elections. Therefore, I do need everyone's vote, regardless of where you live in Lee County. My whole platform is basically to be your voice and advocate. So I do have a website that's out there. My complete bio is also on that website. And I like to tell people, go to the website, read the bio. If you suffer from insomnia, guaranteed to put you to sleep. More importantly, on the very first page of that website, there's a form. And I am asking people, please go to the website, go to this form. I'm looking for your input. List out there, your top three issues that you see as being important in Lee County. I want to hear from you. So it's not just important what I believe to be important, I want to hear from you. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Dunmire, Lee County School Board, District Six at law. That means that everyone that's registered can vote for me. Also, I can make a difference. And you're going to get an opportunity, ask me how in about two weeks, because District Six will be coming up. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for listening to all of us. It's so great that you have an interest. Thanks.
James Adio, I'm running, uh, for Lee County Sheriff. I think that everybody knows why I'm running for Lee County Sheriff. We, we definitely need a change here. I want to take the politics of policing, I'm not much of a politician myself, I'm just a cop, I own a business and I have two kids. I went to St. Francis and Bishop Barrow, that's all I know, is life in Lee County. And it's been going crazy on the side of law enforcement. And what I want to do is I want to make a change and I'm running non-party, um, because I want everybody to have their voice in who should be their sheriff. The numbers work out well, it can happen. We can make a change and we can make Lee County safe again for our families. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carmen Solone and I am running for Lee County Supervisor of Elections. I hope to be your favorite candidate in the August thirtieth election. I have a master's degree in management and over seventeen years of local government experience. I was the worker bee on the other side of that phone, helping you with your issue. I also have a, a heart for service for my community. I have volunteered on many citizens' boards and committees, letting, lending a citizen's voice. And just as I did that on those committees, I will make sure your voice is heard at the ballot box. It is time to improve the accountability and the transparency in that office. Every dollar, every dime, no more headlines about wasted taxpayer money on incompatible equipment and just plain confusion at Election Day. It's time to improve the communication between the office and the community. That office needs to listen to all voters in Lee County. And finally, it is time to improve the customer service in that office because the office works for you, the taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Lori Thady and I'm running for School Board District Three. That is the Astero, Bonita Springs and Fort Myers Beach area. I'm running to make schools, to make the students the top priority and to increase teacher retention. I also believe in common sense curriculum, not Common Core. I also believe in common sense curriculum, not Common Core. And I strongly oppose the high-stakes testing. Now, although you cannot vote for me, you are able to get to know me and speak highly of me, I appreciate that. And once elected, even though we have a single district, we are your voice also. So please get to know your candidates, thank you.
My name is Dennis Sinclair, I'm running for Lee County Supervisor of Elections. I have thirty-four years in IT and thirty-one years starting to run my own businesses, most of which have been here in Lee County. I want to, I want to make the office far more efficient. I want to make the voter experience for you far better. It's been not so good as we know for the last four or eight years. And I want to make the, I want to make the office accountable to you. So you can see what's going on, and when there's a problem, I will be very clear and upfront about it and how we're going to deal with it. I have a county degree, I have three years of computer engineering, and I have served on the Board of the Red Cross here in Lee County for six years. I started, went to nonprofits here, including Young Professionals, which is over seven thousand and hundred members here in the county. And been HIPAA Group, the IT Lunch Group, I got all the IT directors, CIOs, and their staff together in a five-county area, most of which I've never met before. Brought in national speakers, FBI, Secret Service, military, all kinds of stuff. So, done a lot here in the community. Young Professionals is one of the, one of the sponsoring organizations for this group. And I'll actually be moderating the event on the twenty-fifth. So, thank you all for coming.
All right, any other prospective candidates? Future candidates, okay. We are getting the closing now, and we start, we started the opening here, and we start that with this one. And we go that, okay, thank you.
I want to thank everybody for joining today, and it's going to take a team. And that's what I told the people when I first decided to run, that if I had them as a team with me, we could be successful. And that's what we have to do. For about five years now, I've been working on various teams to help stop Common Core and high-stakes testing, and bring sense back to the classroom. Local control is what we need, and it's going to take parents, and teachers, and educators, and all those people out there have to be paying attention to this massive undertaking. We are in a sinking ship, our children really need our help. And I'd love it if you would join forces with us. Lock arms, go to my Facebook page, my website, and tell us what you need to have done and help us to be able to win this election over the kids. Thank you.
I would like to start by responding to a comment about the fact that I'm in Benita Estero. The first year I was on the school board, I visited every single school in the entire district, with the exception of some churches. That means that I visited over a hundred schools the first year on the board. Recently, someone from District Five commented to me that they thought I was their school board member because I was the one who was working with them on some programs they were trying to develop in their county. So it's not like I spend my time with Benita Estero. I was elected to represent the kids in this community countywide, and that's what I had done my first four years. We have outstanding schools of quality educational professionals and many schools. Transformational change is needed to tackle our most difficult and demanding problems. We can have a world-class system that reflects the quality of work done every day in schools across this district. We can graduate kids ready for work in life with the right board. We can provide professional support and working conditions our staff needs and deserves. We can inspire local confidence in a high-performing public education system. I don't want to tell Dr. Atkins and district employees how to do their jobs, I want to help them do it better. I describe myself as a critical thinker, problem solver, change agent, and team player. I ask the tough questions and push for evidence-based best practices. And I also want to thank the New Majority Alliance. This has been a terrific forum, I appreciate the format, and I appreciate all of you showing up for this. Thank you.
Ken, yes, thank you to the New Majority Alliance, Alliance for having us here, thank you to everyone for bearing through. My name is Derek Donnell, and I need your support, and I need your vote. If one thing I hope I was able to get through you today is two pieces, is that I'm very relatable, and most of all, I'm very honest. There are a lot of issues that we kind of just talk over, but this new board that will take place in November, there are some issues, some tough issues that are going to happen on the watch. It is going to require us to hunker down, to work together, and to listen to the community and get through. So please understand that having been through Cape Coral in the down times, when the economy turned, I understand what's coming. One of the issues you brought up was about the transgender, it's coming. The superintendent's contract, it's coming. The new high school, wherever, these are issues that are going to face this new board, and I'm ready for it. As you look through and decide, there are qualifications for me, when I'm looking at candidates in the other districts, three things stick out, the qualifications, I want you to look at my qualifications, I think they stand out. Number one, though, I want you to think about is why is someone running? What is their purpose? My purpose is the fact of those children. I have a child that's in the school district, and I have one that's graduated. Have no issues to go anywhere and prove any point. But somehow or another, in all of this seriousness, we've kind of forgotten the word, F-word, I love the best, it's called fun. We don't talk about that anymore. School is about fun, and fun is not the antithesis of achievement, it's not. So, yes, there's time to be serious, and yes, we're going to have some fun. And most of all, we're going to make our district hard-working, identify the problems, because I am going to be honest, we are going to communicate, we're going to get back on top where we're supposed to be. Vote for me, Triple D, for School Board District Seven of Lee County. That was one of the rounds, Derek Donnell, thank you.
I'm Betsy Vaughn, and I'm your proactive choice for Lee County School Board District Seven. What does that mean to be proactive? It means to have foresight. It means to not wait to the last minute and then, and then be reactive. Case in point, the Benita School, the way that was handled, it should have been on the forefront of the, of the agenda for the district, and, well, I can't, I don't have time to relate the whole story, but the bottom line is sometimes stuff happens. And so you can't wait till the last minute, you have to plan ahead, you have to have foresight. Other qualities that I think I bring to the board, I am a kind of person, I listen, I am collaborative, I am a team player. But that said, I am also unafraid to take a stand. I like to do my homework, I study the issues. Some other things that hopefully I brought out today is, I don't have an ideological agenda. I don't, I'm not a politician, this is the first time that I've run for any office. I'm a good communicator, I'm used to communicating, from my years as a teacher, with parents and with the community as a school board member. I vow that I will go out into the community to make Lee County the best that it can be. I also vow that it will be a mission of mine to get all the local governments on board to work in tandem with this school board, and also to work in tandem with wonderful community projects such as Pennies for Community Progress, which I'm involved with, because we must do better for our economically disadvantaged students. So I hope you vote for me, Betsy Vaughn, thank you.
And I also want to thank you for sticking it out with us for two hours. And that, my goodness, this is an impressive slate of candidates, and I'm honored to be on the slate with them. To me, it goes back to why, right? You've heard a little bit about how, you've heard a little bit about what, but why, right? If you read Simon Sinek's book, it all comes down to why. For me, it's, the end of knowledge must surely be service to one's community. The end of knowledge must surely be service to one's community. To me, that means if you've gotten a great education, if you've got great experiences, you have a great career, and you've got a community that may, may need you, you step up, right? I'm an absolute reluctant candidate, I am happy to applaud and let our school board continue to do great work, if they're doing great work. But when there's major systemic, significant gaps, then someone has to step up. I think we're doing a great job in a number of respects, but as was stated, seventy-four percent of our students are graduating, twenty-six percent are not. That means that in certain arenas, in the African-American community, thirty-nine to forty percent are not graduating or not completing. Latino community, thirty percent are not graduating or not completing. In some of our poverty-stricken areas, it's like fifty percent. So when you look at poverty, when you look at issues that we face in terms of crime, it all comes back to education. And as good as we've been able to do with a very non-diverse or multicultural set of teens, there's another set of influences that we know. And I represent not only the ability to take us to twenty-first century education and beyond in a way that's effective and a way that's well-thought-out, but I also represent a way to communicate to our other parts of our population and get them along. As an example, in a Latino family, they are sometimes very apprehensive of reaching out to a principal or a student. If someone speaks to them in Spanish and teaches them the ropes, it's another thing. So I think developing workshops for those communities is also most important. They get more of them, to graphic.
Ladies and gentlemen, you must admit we have a wonderful team here. I'll put you three on one of them, hold on, please. And we will, we will. Let's give the post a chance to process.
Thank you very much, Dr. Phedya Diñuri. Again, somebody said to me, you did not introduce yourself as Dr. Michael Jeffrey. Well, sometimes I use it, and sometimes I do not. Nevertheless, I want to thank the candidates for being here, but I particularly wanted to thank the audience for being present and participating in a very wide manner. And I must indeed say, that was a grand finale, it was very informative. And when you leave here today, think of the candidates, think of what you have heard. When you vote for the polls, on August, what, thirtieth, or eighth, whatever date that is, make sure you vote for the right candidate. Thank you very much, see you next time.